Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the May 22, 2023 Board of Education meeting. I'd like to alert you to the two exits in the rear of the room and two exits behind me up on the dais. Let's all stand for the pledge. We are going to start tonight's meeting with a bang. The Board of Education would like to recognize a group of outstanding students at Cornwall Central High School. For that, I will pass it on to Superintendent Dade.
Thank you, Mr. Cardy. So we have our distinct honor and privilege to recognize some of the best and the brightest and the most talented that we have here in the Cornwall Central School District. So this is always the highlight of our meetings. Anytime that we can celebrate all the accomplishments and well-deserved accolades of our students. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Piazza to talk a little bit about what these students have accomplished over their tenure at CCHS.
Thank you, Mr. Dade. Can I ask the following students to please come and join me up front? Austin Caston, Sean Hanson, Matty Diarco, James Gibbons, Kerry Beluga, and Tyler Reed. So I'm very lucky tonight to be able to share these six students with you who have shown a degree of excellence in the arts, in career and technical education, and athletics. So first, I'd like to recognize Sean and Austin. Sean and Austin's, Sean and, excuse me, Sean Caston, Sean Hanson and Austin Caston, rough start for Mr. Piazza, I apologize, just participated in February in the Skills USA competition through Orange Ulster Bosse's. The Skills USA regional event at OU Bosse's features over 300 students from technical schools and Bosse's programs across the Hudson Valley. Out of this huge group of competitors, two CCHS students earned regional recognition as medalists. Senior Austin Caston earned second-place medal for carpentry. Junior Sean Hanson took home the first-place medal for automotive service tech. Both Austin and Sean are super-talented young men who have put in a great amount of work to achieve this honor. Sean, who owns a 97% GPA, will be continuing at CCHS next year, and we are sure will continue to find success both at the high school and through his auto program at OU Bosse's. Due to Austin's tremendous skill as a carpenter and the support of the contacts he has developed and impressed at OU Bosse's, he has been accepted into a union position and plans to begin his career in carpentry next year. Congratulations, Austin and Sean. Next up, I'd like to recognize Matty Diarco and James Gibbons. Matty and James were the recipients of the Orange Ulster Bosse's Humanities Award Honoree for the class of 2023 Cornwall Central High School. James was recognized for his talent in drawing and painting and digital arts. James has received two Scholastic Art Awards honorable mentions in his high school career. James has a passion for art and plans to study animation at SUNY Fredonia in the fall. Matty Diarco was recognized for her talent as a singer and actress. Matty was selected to the All-State Mixed Chorus earlier this school year and starred as Bonnie in the CCHS musical Anything Goes. Madeline plans to study music education at the Korean School of Music at SUNY Potsdam next year. Congratulations, Matty and James. And finally, we recognize Kerry Beluga and Tyler Reed. Kerry and Tyler have been recognized by the Orange County Interscholastic Athletics Association as Scholar Athletes from CCHS for the class of 2023. Kerry and Tyler have both represented Cornwall in a tremendous fashion, both on and off the field, or track and mat in this case. That was my one joke, so thank you. Appreciate the laughs. I'll get better. Tyler, of course, won the New York State Wrestling Championship at the 160-pound level this fall, this winter. Kerry has a number of incredible accomplishments in her CCHS career, including winning the Champ Sports National Cross Country Championship in December. And just last week, on May 13th, Kerry set the U.S. record in the girls' 2,000-meter steeplechase at the 55th Annual Luke's Track and Field Games. What I would like to say that speaks most about these two individuals is their participation in the CCHS Student Leadership Program who organized yesterday's first annual Dragon Day at CCMS. This was a fantastic event for our school and community, and these two students played a huge role in making it possible. For their futures, Tyler plans to attend SUNY Binghamton, where he will continue his wrestling career, and Kerry will attend the University of Colorado on a track and field cross-country scholarship. Congratulations.
If we could have the board come on up for a picture with these phenomenal students.
Congratulations again to everybody. And it goes without saying, you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. This, you are the, you are the high point of the meeting, so from here, you will be excused if you want to, you know, go home, do schoolwork, or anything else. Okay, we will continue our meeting with our first recognition of visitors. There will be two opportunities to speak at tonight's meeting, now and then at the end of the meeting. This first session will be capped at 30 minutes total. Anyone who does not get to speak now will be able to do so later. Comments, including obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, or statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice, will not be tolerated. Anyone wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present those comments to the superintendent during regular business hours. Finally, please remember there is no cross-dialog between speakers and members of the board. Anyone wishing to speak is invited to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit your comments to three minutes. And if you'd like to leave your contact information, you can do so on the sign-in sheet right next to Linda. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Lori K. Hefner. I teach at Cornwall Central Middle School, for those of you who don't know me. What I have to say is not nearly as exciting as all of our talented students. Congratulations to all of them. I just wanted to first thank you so much for listening and acting on our need for air conditioning in the middle school. We are so entirely grateful. We have, most of the units in the classrooms, as I understand, are up, and they should all be operational by September. So again, I wanted to thank you for that, for listening and acting on that. I'm here tonight just to, maybe I'm pushing my luck, but asking for something else. We have a need in our schools, I can speak for the middle school, but the other schools too. We really are in need of another copy machine. We, we have 86 plus teachers in the middle school plus other staff, and it's really difficult for us to get to our copy machines. Many times, they're broken. I have to say that everybody in the school, from the custodians and all the teachers, as a matter of fact, I was going to make a video, but I only have three minutes. If you could imagine, I mean, it's not funny, but we try to make a joke out of it. You can walk into the teacher's room, and people are on the ground, and they're back there, lifting up 1G and 2F, and our custodians are helping us. And then we go to the office, and the secretaries help out, and the administrators help out when there's students who need copy of class notes and other things that are urgent. And everybody is trying to be part of the solution. But when I tell you that the copying machine is really important, it's an essential tool that we use for our teaching, that we need for our students. I know that we will have one-to-one Chromebooks coming up shortly. I think the perception may be that we'll use less copies, perhaps we will, but many teachers have talked about it, and especially the math teachers. They make lots of copies, lots of packets, lots of practice, and it really is, it really is a need that we have. I just wanted to make a picture in your mind. So if you think about, I'm driving to work, and I live in Montgomery, for those of you who don't know me. So I'm driving to work from Montgomery, and I get to New Windsor. And like, two out of three days a week, my car would just stop working. That's what it feels like when you walk into the teacher's room to make a copy. Okay, our copiers are broken a lot of the time. And it's not because how we use them, it's not because we're not getting help, it's not because the secretaries aren't calling in. It's because, you know, we have a lot of people using only two smaller machines. So I'm asking you, if you could, I would be really grateful to just consider this, look into it. Again, it's an issue in the middle school, but I know the other schools are also having the same issue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and to try to work together to come up with a solution for this. I know sometimes we have extra money at the end of the year. If we have some of that money, that would be great if you would just consider our need for more copy machines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Yeah, you can leave it there. That's, thank you. All right, if there will be nobody else, then I'll just take a minute to offer some responses to questions brought up last week. There was one question raised by Mrs. Barbara Gassa regarding the budget. She asked if there were any expenses listed anywhere. And there are, going to our homepage, cornwollschools.com, if you click on Board of Education, then Budget Information, a bunch of links pop up. There's the, there's one link that literally says 23, 24 proposed budget line by line. That's where you're going to get the most granular information about each expense. There's also a question about our lack of communication at meetings, but as I explained last meeting, we do respond at the next meeting, as I'm doing now. There was another question. Ms. Brenda Wright asked why it was mandatory to eliminate some positions that were on our consent agenda last week. I think our ensuing discussion as a board that night covered that. And then there was one more question from Ms. Dawn Kilgore regarding the bus to, it was more of a statement regarding bus to the middle school for after-school sports. All I can say to that is that your concern has been heard. It's a logistical issue that can't be resolved just in a simple two weeks, but it certainly has been heard. Okay, that brings us to our reports. And we'll start off with our student reports, and I'll hand it off to our student representative, Colton Barry.
This is the Cornwall Elementary School good news. We can't believe it's already May. This year's been flying by. Hard to believe that there are only 23 school days left, but who's counting? At the end of April, Mrs. Osborne and Mrs. Riley's kindergarten class celebrated Earth Day with a week full of activities, projects, books, and songs. The students learned about the different ways that we can all help take care of our planet. Orange County Executive Steven Newhouse came, was the guest speaker for our April spirit assemblies. Mr. Newhouse told students about his work as a commander in the United States Navy Reserves and taught us all about April's character trait, sense of humor. He also helped us congratulate our principal award winners for March and April. Our students were very, were hard at work this month preparing for the New York State ELA and math exams. Luckily, we have awesome teachers here at CCES that can even make test prep fun. Mrs. Noonan's fourth-grade class played a rigorous game of Mario Brothers to prepare for the New York State ELA exam. The students conquered five levels of review to save Princess Peach. They practiced their close-reading skills, multiple-choice strategies, using context clues to figure out the meaning of vocab words and more. Mrs. Camacho's fourth-grade class played Human Hungry Hippos to review questions for the New York State Math Exam. Each group took turns catching food, and the color of their food matched math questions for each mathematical domain they studied this year. They worked hard and persevered through some difficult questions. Miss Onkodong also worked with Mrs. Jados and Mrs. Creeshee's second grade, second graders, the STEAM Expo. They were, they were shark tankers. They used recycled materials to create inventions they thought would be useful for themselves and someone they knew. They had to come up with a design and then create their invention. They had to write up a pitch to deliver to an audience, and then created videos of themselves presenting their pitch. During the expo, the students who attended had a great time showing off their inventions and explaining the process of their projects. Lastly, we want to thank our amazing PTO for putting together a whole week's worth of events and treats for our facility, faculty, and staff in honor of Teachers Appreciation Week. We had a day of rainbow snacks, a spa oasis in the computer lab, a bunch of gift card giveaways, and a luau luncheon in the library. Now we are looking forward to a bunch of field trips, our K-4 Field Day, and fourth grade moving up. This is the COH good news. On Saturday, May 6th, Cornwall and Hudson held their 100-year celebration. Many alumni, retired teachers, current staff, and students came back to COH for a visit. The day was filled with good music, delicious cake, fun activities, and great memories. Thank you to the entire committee who spent many hours planning the event. It was a huge success. On May 9th, the COH and Willow fourth-grade band orchestra and chorus came together to perform at the annual spring concert. The students enjoyed performing with peer musicians from the opposite elementary school. A dress rehearsal was held on the morning of the concert for all third-grade students from both elementary schools at the high school. All performing groups did a fine job. The fourth-grade students visited the middle school in person on Wednesday, May 10th. The middle school administration and members of the counseling department greeted them with open arms. The students participated in a scavenger hunt that brought them around the building with current fifth-grade students. It was a great introduction to life in the middle school. Thank you to Mrs. Palumbo and her staff. Teacher Appreciation Week was held from May 8th to May 11th. Thank you to the PTO for putting together a theme for each day. For example, on Tuesday, the students were asked to bring in a flower or a picture of a flower to show their appreciation. Needless to say, each classroom had an array of beautiful flowers on display. The week accumulated with a wonderful luncheon. On May 12th, the COH PTO hosted their annual spring fling. Fourth-grade students from all three elementary schools gathered behind COH, participated in many field games, and played on the new playground. Over 124th graders students attend. A good time was had by all. The PTO held its annual talent show on Friday, May 19th. There were 22 acts involving more than 33 and one teacher performance. Each act was extremely polished, and the audience had a thorough, was thoroughly entertained. Thank you to the PTO and Mrs. Zericky for putting the show together. On Tuesday, May 30th, our music department will be hosting the annual instrumental demo and registration night at 7:00 PM in the CCHS auditorium. All third-grade students and families are invited to attend this event, exciting event, where the students will be able to explore all the instruments up close. This is the Willow good news. We celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, May 8th through May 12th. Willow became, Willow teachers were shown lots of love and appreciation from our students, families, and PTO. A big thank you for all that they do. The fourth-grade spring concert with fourth graders from COH and middle school in Willow took place, took place on May 9th. The students wowed us with their musical talents, and each ensemble put on a great performance. Our fourth graders visited the middle school this month. While they were there, or while they went on their, while they, while they were there, they went on a scavenger hunt and got to ask some professional middle schoolers all their questions. They are definitely ready for middle school. Third graders took a walk at the, took a walk on the Wild Side when they traveled to the Bronx Zoo. They explored the zoo and learned about different animals and their habits. The Sensational Second Grade took a walking trip to the Cornwall Historic, Historical Society. Students created their own family trees and had Mrs. Kamala analyze them to find out where their families originated from. She traced back roots to many families in Cornwall, including a great-great-grandparent, who was a past superintendent, and a family member who was a mayor of a neighboring town. Students enjoyed exploring artifacts of Cornwall's history and visiting Town Hall. Congratulations to Noah Pepe and Juniper Huang for their participation in the NISMA Festival in Highland this week. Their hard work shined as they showcased their musical ability. We're looking forward to a fun and busy June as we count down the last days of school. This is the CCMS good news. Incoming CCMS fifth graders had the opportunity to visit the middle school in May. Students were matched up with current fifth-grader students for a scavenger hunt around the middle school, learned about classes, programs, and activities. The students then had an opportunity to meet some professional middle school students, seventh graders, and ask them questions about CCMS. Incoming fifth-grade parents were welcomed to the middle school with an orientation on the night of the budget vote. Parents learned all about CCMS and adolescent development. They had an opportunity to meet Mr. Debold and Ms. Burton, who shared their role as school counselors for our fifth-grade students and how they will be assisting our students in their transition to CCMS. Eighth-grade students at CCMS had the opportunity to learn about different careers and opportunities last week. Thank you to the CCMS guidance staff for setting up the opportunity, as well as to all our community members for volunteering their time.
Thanks, Colton. And, oh, there's one more. Oh, got it. Sorry, Louis was whispering misinformation in my ear. Colton, thank you. I know this is your last presentation to us of the, of the year, so I just want to thank you for, I know being a senior for you and Peter is all busy enough, so finding the time to come to our meetings, give us this perspective. I think we said it at the beginning of the year, hearing from the students what's going on in the schools is like oxygen for us. Because it's easy to get lost in the bubble of just this, and seeing how it actually translates on the ground is invaluable. So thank you for, for doing that for us every month. We wish you luck the rest of the school year, although it's not much to go, and we certainly look forward to seeing you at graduation. If you would like to leave, you know, because you have other stuff to do, feel free. If you want to stick around, up to you. All right, Colton.
I'll shamelessly jump in and congratulate CJ for attending Clemson in the fall.
Add, add that to the update. Yep. All right, we will continue with our superintendent's update. I'll pass that to Mr. Terry Dade.
Thank you. So just wanted to start with, follow-up to the copiers at the middle school. This is in direct response to Ms. Hefner. I've been in conversations with the CCTA over the past two meetings. Unfortunately, the two main copiers at CCMS were having some issues last week going into this week, so Harvey's been in contact with Xerox to talk about the repair time and things of that nature. So we've seen some improvement there. Just wanted the board to know that, you know, we're really trying to pay attention to the service piece. Like, when a ticket goes in, how quickly are they repairing it? Because like Ms. Hefner said, the last thing that we want is for a teacher not to be able to make the copiers that, the copies that they need. In the same token, the reason why I'm asking the board to focus on the service piece is that, you know, one of my expectations when we do go one-to-one is that we see a dramatic reduction in the number of copies in the district. It's just, it is an absolute expectation. For example, just by way of data, at the high school, they're making 25% less copies than the middle school. And I think a lot of that is because high school has been one-to-one since, since we started the one-to-one initiative. At the middle school, we're not, we weren't there yet. So that could be one of the pieces that we look towards. But right now, we're at a five, about 526,000 copies for the month of April. So I'm looking to kind of bring that down across the district as we, as we move forward. But the same token, like I've met with John and Brenda, you know, we've asked them to communicate right with Harvey if there's a significant issue, because when Harvey makes the call, someone gets their behind in gear and gets out there. So we're really focusing in hard on the repair piece. And then as we go one-to-one, really looking for a reduction in the paper usage in the, in the district moving, moving forward. But we'll keep a keen, a keen eye on that. For those that weren't able to make it to Dragon Day, you missed out on a, on a treat. It was a fantastic event led by our Student Leadership Council students. It was great to watch Mr. Debold and Mr. Simo in action, providing guidance and support while also letting them learn along the way. So things like what time should we get there? And, you know, I was speaking with Mr. Debold, and he was like, ah, probably need to get there an hour or two before what you're thinking. And they kind of learned that, that, you know, you need a little bit more runway on a big event like this. And then Mr. Simo directing and announcing at the same time, like, I need 12 student leadership council members at the, at the start line right now to help wrangle three-year-olds. Mine did not participate much to his soccer prowess of not touching a field. He was not one of the three-year-old sprinters at the, at the, at the event. But absolute wonderful family, community event, all the sports represented. So many families out to enjoy the day. There was only one hiccup in the event, and that was me running the 5K. You know, there's a point in Kerry's story where she attacks the hill. That was not me. So, you know, the hill definitely kicked my behind. Turning the corner and hitting the road, leaning up to the road is not, not fun. So, but all in all, hats off to Mr. Simo and Mr. Debold, and a job really well done. The name of our dragon is now, what, Mr. Simo? Draco. So they had a community-wide, getting votes tallied for naming, naming the dragon, so that was revealed as well. Anything to add, gentlemen? I can cede some of my time to you.
Jason, get the, get the mic so it's registered to posterity. Yeah.
So I just wanted to comment on how noticeable it was and how evident it was from the beginning to the end that this was a student-led project. People that came visiting commented on how quick the kids were to welcome them, to make, the vendors that were there supporting, running activities, how quickly the kids were and how frequently. how frequently the kids were going around just checking on people, making sure they had everything they needed. You know, was there anything they could support with? From the start of the event to the end of the event, and by the end of the event, you know, we met after 12 o'clock just to say, "Okay, everybody's gone, now we get to clean up." And our goal was to make sure that when we left, nobody that came in the next day would even know whether we were there, and they accomplished that. So, Mr. Debold, I don't know if you want to speak here, but just tremendously impressed with the work ethic, the organization, and just the skill set of our students yesterday.
So, kind of to Mr. Cardy's point, it's like the oxygen. I do like coming to board meetings, hearing about all the successes. I also like coming to board meetings because I pick up my son's clothes in Lost and Found, so. But this day yesterday, I know, I think that Mr. Simo and I, we have these reflection meetings planned, but the day of the event yesterday, at the end, they already were saying, "I wish we would have done this," or "We could have done that," or "Next year." They were already talking about improving, so I think the biggest thing that we accomplished with this is that, I think we have 34 in total, the Leadership Council, something. I mean, we have 34 brand-new leaders in this community that I guarantee will, their impact will go past Dragon Day. But, community members already saying, "Can't wait till next year," so on and so forth. I mean, I just look at it as, you know, at the last board meeting, I just said, you know, "When you give students like this the time and space, they can really fly," and they flew. I mean, yesterday didn't look like year one. Yesterday looked like it was a long time planning, and they already were critical on themselves and saying, "I wish I could do XYZ," changing on the fly, just really, really mature, really, really great showing, you know, from our community, from our kids. So, it was an awesome day.
Thank you. And last thing I would just add is the thought process behind who would be on the Student Leadership Council, so we don't have all of our seniors walking out the door. It's really underclassmen and seniors on the council.
Yes. Yes, we had to start somewhere. You know, I think that, we mentioned that, that we had to start, because this is kind of like a pilot. We really didn't know what this was, and we basically had to say, "We got to start somewhere." So, we picked, had every coach pick one junior and one senior that exhibits leadership skills. Didn't necessarily have to be a captain. The reason for the juniors and seniors, we wanted the continuity. When those juniors come back next year, they're going to kind of know what it takes to be like a leader, and they've already gone through the gauntlet, so I think they're almost going to be like the people's, like, saying to the other ones, "No, no, no. You kind of do it the better," or "You got to do it the other way," which is a good thing. But our whole goal of doing this was, "Let's see what we have, and then from there, expand upon it." So, next year, it's going to be even bigger, so I can only imagine just extremely better than even this year, which is hard to believe. So, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And, thank you as well. It really was, all the reviews were through the roof, so hard to believe it was just the first year, as Mr. Debold said. Okay, that brings us to our president's report. Obviously, last Tuesday was the budget vote and Board of Ed elections. I'd like to congratulate all three winners, Christine Diaz, Christian Bernelli, and Carl Gilpatrick. We look forward to having all three of you on this day as come July. And, of course, to Lori Beth Pelletta, Teresa Budick, Larry Berger. Sincere thank you for running. This is not the last time I will mention you. Teresa could not be here. She's away with family for the extended weekend, but we'll have another crack at summarizing how much both Larry and Teresa have meant to this board. It's an extraordinary honor to serve. I think we all know that. Both you and Teresa, serving for so long. You exclusively on this board, Teresa, many years on the Monroe Woodbury Board, certainly serves, has served as an example to me personally, and your imprint will last far beyond the years that you've served here, which is kind of hard to believe because you served for so, so long. But again, not the final word, but thank you again for your service and your continued service, which will continue in a moment with our Facilities Committee update. And most importantly, thank you to the community. Budget passed very overwhelmingly, which was just a great shot in the arm. We appreciate the support. So many great programs, great positions, valuable positions, were part of that budget this year, and will have an immediate impact in the fall. And that's going to be really exciting to see all of those, some additions, some solidifications of positions that we've been trying over the past two years. So, to the community, a big thank you, and we look forward to seeing the impact of that budget next year and the years to come. Okay, that brings us to our presentation tonight. And, just to give a little context, this is the Facilities Committee recommendation for the athletic field infill. Over the last, well, I'll take you back on a journey to last year, where you spent most of the, most of the year discussing, getting feedback from the community about what the capital project would look like, in particular, what the athletic field would look like. There were just a 12-month continuous debate about that. The public voted, all of that was approved. This year, we moved into the execution stage, and that was passed to our administrators and Facilities Committee, working in tandem to figure out how will this actually be pulled off? What are some of these small details? All of these little tiny decisions that go into it. So, that work is continuing, but we are at a point now where we can get an update from the Facilities Committee regarding their decision on this one aspect, which is the athletic field infill. And for that, I will pass it on to Larry, who will tee up some other guest speakers that we have tonight.
Thank you, Brendan, and thank you for those kind words. I'll leave it at that. After considering input from the board, the public, site visits, we've had the athletic director and students go on site visits to various fields, looking at literature, looking at research, hearing presentations. The committee is recommending the Virgin EPDM infill. In conjunction with that, part of the project is surface drainage of the system, and part of that system is a filtration system. So, we will also be hearing from Rick Kreis, Rick, I'm going to screw up your name, I'm sure. Kreisdorf? Close enough?
Not sure.
Oh, okay. Anyway, we're going to be hearing from Rick, who's a representative of ATURF Incorporated, which was the company that the committee also recommended. And they'll be discussing in detail two reports that had been distributed to the board. And, Rick, well, no, not Rick. I'm going to hand this off to Harvey so he can sweat.
Hey, Rick.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, let me see here. There's something on my screen here I'm not hitting. Let's see. Okay.
Don't you love technology?
Sure. H with a circle.
Okay, just hang on. Okay, what about the sound though? Even if you can't.
Harvey, why don't we just talk to him through your phone?
We can do that.
Okay.
So, Rick, we're having some technical difficulties.
Okay.
We can hear you fine, we can see you fine.
Okay.
And what we'll do is I'll be the mediator.
Okay.
So, give me one second here.
Sure.
Okay, so, you can't see, correct?
I cannot see you guys.
Okay, so, we are here, we have the entire board in front of you, and if you could just introduce yourself and take us through the host information that we had talked about providing the board.
Okay, hello, everybody. Thanks for having me, appreciate it. My name is Rick Kristof, the Vice President of ATURF, based in Buffalo, New York. We do a lot of projects all across the state, Pennsylvania, and many downstate by you guys, you know, there. So, I was asked to give some information or the benefits or why I would suggest EPDM, Virgin EPDM, as a good option for the district. So, I'm going to go through that. Feel free to jump in and ask a question. Obviously, can't see you guys, so somebody would have to, you know, just let me know or interrupt me. Feel free to do that. So, we had, just to give you some background, we're, EPDM first was on my radar in a big way. So, locally here in Buffalo, there's a large school district called the Williamsville School District. They consist of Williamsville North, Williamsville South, and Williamsville East school districts. At the same time, Clarence School District was also looking at doing a very large project. So, the Williamsville School District was approximately 700,000 square feet of turf, and the infill became a big deal at the time because of news articles and different things that were out there, and USA Today and other stuff like that. So, they did a lot of homework. Their school board, just like you all, was heavily involved, and they were looking at, obviously, regular SBR rubber, which are recycled car tires. Then they're looking at organics like, you know, coconut cork, different things like that, but then you have a lot of major performance issues. So, the topic of EPDM rubber came up, which is a man-made rubber that you guys will all be familiar with because it's used in your everyday life, even though you might not realize it. But in terms of projects, you would see locally every track around that the district already participates or runs on is going to be EPDM rubber. All the rubberized playgrounds that you see are EPDM rubber. A lot of everyday products, your, you know, soles of your shoes right now might be EPDM rubber, there's a good chance. But one product I'd like to mention is EPDM roofing, and there's a couple of reasons why EPDM roofing is used, is because, A, it's very, holds up very well to ozone, but also the water runoff, it's never shows any contamination, anything I've ever seen. That's why it's been used for so many years. So, obviously, the water that runs off your roof is going into drain in the stormwater systems, into DC, looks at it, all the different stuff like that. So, that's one reason why it came up as a good option, is artificial turf infill, is because in a field, they're going to have wear and tear, they're going to have water from rain coming in, drainage, but then also being exposed to UV rays, and it holds up very well to that, performs very well. Another thing that's in your everyday life, the reason why I think it's a great option, besides it feels and plays really nice, is it's in your every faucet in America, soda fountain machines, gaskets, it's, we all have in our homes and dispense water, and it's just a very inert, chemically inert material. It's, just doesn't, you know, nothing sheds out of it, doesn't leach. It's a very, you know, low state of energy rubber. So, in a nutshell, that's a lot of the benefits. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. And in terms of the field use, just in, I'm just going to use Westchester County, so it's the first field to go in that we put it in. Now, there would be John Jay High School, Briar Cliff Manor, and that's John Jay and Cross River, New York. They have two fields now. Lakeland School District, which would be Walter Panis and Lakeland High School have, you know, I think there's about 600,000 square feet of turf going back several years. I've never seen any issues or any complaints or any studies or anybody testing anything that came back negative. And just the last note on Williamsville North, it was very, you know, like, again, a hot topic. It was so hot of a topic that when we sent the material off to be tested, they didn't even want to do it in a local lab because they didn't want to have any chance of, you know, somebody be involved or know the school district or, you know, almost like a court case where you're trying to get a jury that's not aware of all the fine details and the politics around it or the news stories. So, it was actually sent off to Erie, Pennsylvania, at a lab there to do the testing against the European Standard for Children's Toys, EN71, and it passed, you know, Category 1, which is stringent. And the reason why we use the European standard is at the time, it was actually a lot more stringent than the US standard for children's toys. And actually, it came back and passed Category 2, which is the most stringent. That's things like finger paints, Play-Doh, stuff like that, that a child could digest. And it came back and actually passed those children's toy parameters. So, when you take the total picture, to me, it's just a, it's just a good fit, and it also plays the most like SBR recycled car tire rubber, which gets into a whole other avenue of safety that people have to remember when it comes to day-to-day higher-risk injuries would be concussions or footing and that. So, it's going to perform the closest to SBR rubber, which has, you know, a great track record in terms of, despite some negative news articles, in terms of how it performs every day, the field you guys play on already versus some of the alternative organic infills that don't have a long track record of how they react and performance and slipping and concussions and that sort of thing. So, with that, I'll open up to any questions that I could answer.
My only question was really more to compare all that great information we just heard to any learnings on the alternatives, but I don't know if that's, if now is the right time. You know, just to compare all those pros to what we, because I know we did a larger search of different infills, so maybe, you know, comparing those characteristics to some of the other things. But I want to, that might be a broader question, so if we want to get anything specifically from here.
Let's finish with him.
Yes.
And then we can have that discussion.
Yes. Any, yeah, just specifically about what we just heard.
The type of injuries if a player falls, like scratches and stuff like that.
Okay, Rick, the question.
I can't hear you, yes.
Okay, the question had to do with what kind of history there is with regards to injuries when athletes fall, whether it's ankle sprains, or just scratches.
Yeah. Yep, so with, in a general sense, your, any of your rubbers are going to perform overall have the biggest track record, which EPDM is a rubber, just a man-made rubber. So, in terms of, they have what's called an abrasive index, but the main thing you're looking at is what's called rotational resistance. That's a summary, you know, so for example, the NFL and different groups will have different testing parameters, but you have your abrasive index, your concussion, which is measured by what's called a G-MAX test, and the nice thing about these, they either pass or they don't. So, it's like a golf score for everybody who's watching the PGA Championships in Rochester. You want a lower number typically, that's a safer, means the system's dispersing shock laterally versus the athlete's head or body or shoulder or what have you. And then, in terms of the footing, what you're looking at is rotational resistance as it relates to. Uh, and then in terms of the footing, uh, what you're looking at is rotational resistance as it relates to Newton meters of force, meaning, uh, you wanna be between 35 and 50 Newton meters of force, uh, a- and what that is basically is the amount, you, you're running an athlete plants and somebody hits them, you want the foot to be able to release, but you also need traction for performance. Now, there's no such thing as eliminating injuries on any surface, be it the grass or, or turf or, or somewhere in between hybrid systems that are out there. Uh, but the higher Newton meters of force, if you start getting up to 90, 100, like the original AstroTurf would, would generate up to 150 Newton meters of force, that's the old carpet without any infill. The problem is you would, couldn't release your foot, so you'd have a lot greater chance. But with the system, now it's gonna be testing in the FIFA standard, which is the 35 to 50. Uh, I think the last test I just saw, I could share with you guys after a minute, was, uh, uh, I think right around 35 or something like that. Uh, so it's right in the, the sweet spot. Is there anything I missed in, in that, in answering the question?
Can he talk a little bit more about the abrasive index compared to natural grass abrasive index?
Rick, can you talk a little bit more about the abrasive, um, index that you spoke about with respect to comparing it to just natural turf?
Yeah, so, well, natural turf, you know, it depends on, so, so with natural turf, it's always, uh, tricky because, uh, when tests are done, or even if it was say an NFL looking at something, you're talking about the, the nicest natural turf fields in the world, uh, you know, uh, that are maintained and used eight times a year, don't even practice on them, and then you get into a high school field, let's say, uh, that, you know, I just go at the school fields I played on growing up. And now, so you might have something that are really good shape certain times a year, and they're moist and the grass growing solid, and you might go to that same field and, uh, July 15th and do a summer camp or into August 15th practice, and it's hard and, and tough to land on and all that, so it's tough to equate it exactly to, um, to, uh, natural turf, uh, because also natural turf is gonna take a divot, uh, under, you know, any kind of strong slide or pressure. Uh, you know, so it's gonna release, the grass is gonna break off. Uh, but with, uh, artificial turf, you're usually trying to be between 20 and 35, uh, you know, is, is what they call the abrasive index. Uh, and that's why actually, uh, it's being used, uh, a lot for baseball, baseball infield. One of the concerns was originally sliding on artificial turf, uh, but now with the, you know, the way, the way the turf is with the elastic and a lot softer, you actually almost slide too easy, and those are kinda directly related. And, uh, you know, like my kids play, you know, all kinds of sports, got like cross softball going, uh, football, soccer, basketball, which obviously is not related, but, uh, you know, you're gonna get a, a burn every now and then, but, uh, it, it would usually come in a real cold, frigid type temperature and really have to be drug in there. Uh, so anecdotally, I just don't see it on my own kids and a lot of other kids I coach. Uh, but, uh, it, it definitely slides well, I could send you some abrasive index, but it's hard to compare, it's a long answer, but it's, it's hard to directly compare to natural grass, because natural grass could be in a lot of different states. Uh, we've all played, you know, sports growing up and, and had some serious burns different times of year, even in, you know, in baseball fields, sliding into second or what have you, you know, where you got your whole leg tore up and different stuff like that, where turf doesn't do that.
I have a question about, if he can, uh, if Rick can just expand, he mentioned that it, uh, it doesn't leak? If he can just, uh, that the, the plastic or that, that kind of rub, leach, okay, if he can, uh, just expand on that. Particularly, as I'm thinking of, just kinda the situations he's talking about, a kid slides, maybe cuts themselves, I think this might be relevant.
Rick, could you talk a little bit more about the, uh, the fact that it doesn't leach and it doesn't, um, there's nothing that really comes out of it?
Yes.
Typically when a kid's sliding or when it gets wet?
Yep, so, uh, again, with the, the, the EPDM rubber and the, you know, even the fibers for that, that matter and all that stuff, you're, you're, you're basically, it's contained, so, uh, a- again, it's a chemically inert material, means the ingredients are in, in a low energy state. Uh, so for example, just to compare SBR to EPDM, and many would make the argument, uh, including me, just to be honest, that, uh, in, in the majority of situations, SBR rubber is, is gonna be fine and safe, but EPDM is superior a few ways. One, it's because it doesn't break down to the UV over time, uh, i- as much, you could just use it, again, as, as evidence. Uh, you know, of, of, that's why they don't use, uh, SBR rubber for gaskets, you know, versus EPDM, you know, and your, it could even be your car and your door jams, uh, windshield wiper blades, for example, uh, you know, that, that's all EPDM rubber. Uh, and again, the roofing that's exposed on the top of your school to sun non-stop, and then also rain, and they have the stormwater pollution, so it's really, it doesn't leach out. Where, uh, there's some studies that have shown SBR rubber, especially in the first year or so, uh, you might see things like zinc and, and other stuff, uh, show some trace elements of, of zinc in that, uh, leaching out. But with EPDM, it just doesn't, just doesn't do it. And that's why it passed the, the, the stringent categories, you just can't really get anything out of it. It's just a very self-contained, strong rubber. And it doesn't crack, that's the other key to it.
Thank you. I, I think with, uh, yeah, thank you, Rick, thank you, thank you, Rick, yeah, just.
Thank you, everybody, thanks for hearing, and, um, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Yep, if you have any other questions, send me an email, I'd be happy, sorry I couldn't see y'all, but I do appreciate you having me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, in, in answer to your question, I'm sorry, Jason, oh, there he is, aha, you were hiding. Um, Jason had, um, taken some of the, uh, football, soccer, lacrosse, if I missed any, I'm sorry, um, players out to the various fields, and the one field that they all said was the hardest field to run on and play on was a cork field. And one of the other things we found in our research was that, uh, a cork field needs to be irrigated, uh, or that gets dry and blows away. Um, so tha- that was one of the, you know, two of the reasons that, that fell out of the, uh, recommendation slot.
And were, were we able to, uh, also visit one with the virgin rubber as well, or is it?
A no- a number of them, yes, there were a number of them.
It just to the point of the, uh, the number, it's, it, how, how prevalent is the, the virgin?
Jason, I'm gonna refer to you.
Like just say, i- is it like roughly 50% of the section nine fields? I'm just trying to get a sense for like what the other districts have fallen into. I'm sorry, Jason, I should've asked you if you can speak into the microphone, I just got lost in your answer, but, yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, I mean, you can pick up where you were, I think.
So the kids, when we went around, uh, Colton, were you there with us? No, okay, so we went over spring break and the kids really just spoke to the playability. Um, basically got off the bus and just, you know, they took their sticks, balls, whatever they were playing with, and they just had mini practices and just, you know, had a good time playing around in the different fields. Um, and they were consistent in terms of the feedback, I just took notes, as soon as we got back on the bus, I would just, you know, took out my notepad and just started, you know, writing down, you know, what did you like most about it? What didn't you like about it? Uh, and their feedback was, it was actually very consistent with what we just heard in terms of the slipperiness of the, uh, the cork. Um, they felt it was very hard, kinda like playing on concrete, um, you know, the, the, the bounce of the lacrosse balls, that was something that the kids had noticed, um, where they felt like the EPDM was more consistent with what they would get on a, a good grass field. So, um, they seemed to like the playability a lot more when it came to that, um.
Thanks.
Wasn't there an option that they said was very slippery? They couldn't hold.
That was the cork, yeah. And I've had experience with the polycoated sand, um, and just, that gets extremely hard in the winter time. Uh, we actually, two turf fields that I put in, uh, tore down the middle with the polycoated sand just because in the winter time with extreme cold, you know, ice builds up in it and it just doesn't thaw. Uh, and then all of a sudden, you know, it ends up putting so much tension on the carpet that it's, it's split on us. So, I know there was a lot of finger pointing going on when that happened, but, you know, that was an experience that was not a popular one at the time, so.
And just to memorialize what you had said, it seems like most surrounding districts are using the EPDM.
Yeah, that's the direction a lot of schools are going right now.
So, and those are our competitors, essentially, so we're, we are already playing on it.
Yeah, the kids are playing on it, you know, across, across the section, across the state, they're gonna be playing, yeah. It's the most common is, you know, some form of EPDM rubber.
Got it.
If I may, just to add in there, we heard, uh, presentations on the committee from both Field Turf and A-Turf, who are the two, you know, leading manufacturers of the turf, and the, um, organic infills, it was to the point where A-Turf actually didn't even offer them, he was just like, they're not good, we're not gonna put them on our product. So, it's, you know, I think everybody that we heard that had the alternative infills were unhappy with them in one way or another, in addition to having to water them, if it rains, the cork will get up and move, it'll float away, because it's cork, you know. So there were, there was a lot of issues, um, with the alternative infills.
And, uh, just to stay on that, um, so obviously you, you get, and I'm kinda talking now to the, the facility committee members, um, you get the inconvenience, the cost issues, you know, irrigation, obviously that's, that's gonna be an expense. Um, cork gets up and walks away, you gotta replace that, that's an expense. But the, the thing that, that catches my ear is that it plays really hard. You know, when we, we talk about, Rick kind of alluded to it, um, we have this conversation in the context of student-athlete safety. And I think the thing that we might gloss over is just that, you know, like, the thing that happens every day, kids are falling down. We, I know, not asking for any in-depth study for it, it just anecdotes that, that were picked up in, in the, the conversation just around these alternative infills, just around how that manifested, you know, essentially creating a harder surface compared to.
I think the way that it compacts over time, you know, and, and just the way it settles, and it, it just gets, you know, more and more compacted in where you actually have to, you know, go in and loosen it up, and it's just the added maintenance that happens over the years, um, you know, with added costs, because when it displaces, you have to add more to it. Uh, and I forget the numbers that we had discussed, uh, one of, one of the facilities or maybe the GM had, uh, discussed with us the added cost just every three years that you're gonna end up dumping into it to continue to maintain the field and the depth that's required with the infill.
And before, uh, CJ leaves, you know, we have a varsity athlete who has played on countless fields across the section, region. So, Colton, just based on what you've heard, what you've played on, you know, what do you, what have, what have, what has been your experience as a varsity lacrosse player?
Uh, I mean, I mean, we played on Sufferin', and we also played on Goshen's turf, which are two different turfs. Sufferin', when we both played in the rain, so, uh, the water and made, made it very slippery for both turfs, but definitely you could tell Goshen, you could get a lot better traction, like, players were not falling down as much. But in, like, Sufferin', even if you took like the most simple cut, like you were slipping and just injuring yourself. So, uh, I definitely liked Goshen's more, but you know, I don't, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
I think the cork also, didn't the cork have organics in it, where they're worried about the weeds, you had to treat, you had to treat it for the breakdown of the cork?
Right.
You know, in potential, the potential for weed growth?
I have a question, I wish we have, uh, like, cross-section of the whole, like, the whole layers, sublayers, everything. Uh, my question is about, like, uh, is it pervious all the way down to the soil itself? Like, when it rains, it absorbs everything? Or it's like you have a wafer where everything goes, like, in channel and gets drained on the side? I forgot, I think I saw, like, drawing before about that, like, last year.
So, um, this is getting into the irrigation, um, portion, so we did speak to all of the different types that we were, um, considering in addition to the shock pad and how much, um, it would go right down into the, um, into the system. Uh, the board, uh, came to agreement, um, last year on, on two things. One, that we would do additional work with the filtration, that's why we will be installing at, uh, what is it, the jellyfish?
It's called jellyfish, it's a giant filtration system.
Um, so it's, it's the extra, um, that we promised, uh, the community. Um, in addition to looking at, um, not the, um, cork, uh, not the standard rubber, which, um, Rick was very honest, he has no teeth in this game other than he wants a quality product, but he was honest with us to say he thinks that the, the standard is, is safe, based on his kids' experience and, um, but he said if we wanted to go the extra layer, you know, the, um, virgin EPDM was gonna be, was gonna be it, but it also allowed all of the, um, rain to, uh, get right into our, our filtration system. So, um, we're excited about the extra jellyfish, um, filtration to, um, work on the water concerns that our, our neighbors and other constituents had.
Yeah, in, in answer to your question, Bass, the, the water, when it hit, when the rain hits the field, it does not go into the ground. It go- it gets channeled and then goes through the filtration system.
Anybody else? Great, so, uh, again, Rick, thank you, uh, Larry, thank you for, uh, all the work on the facilities committee, getting all this ready. I know this has been a long, uh, continuous conversation over the past several months, so we appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and that extends to the entire facilities committee. I know a lot of stakeholders have given this a lot of time, so thank you all for that. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda allows the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board who would like to pull a particular item off the consent agenda?
Seven and twelve.
Seven and twelve, Bass?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools. So that's items two through six and eight through eleven. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. That brings us to item seven. And that is the CCWA resolution regarding, uh, absence coverage by members. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept the attached supplemental memorandum of agreement dated May 17th, 2023, between the Cornwall Central School District and the Cornwall Clerical Workers Association pertaining to extended absence coverage by bargaining unit members. Do I have a motion?
I'll move then.
Second? And discussion?
Okay, thanks, Brendan, I mean, I am raising the point here just for more visibility for the public, for our constituents. Uh, what does exactly the resolution do, like, uh, what if we pass it, what if we don't? What's the difference?
Yep.
Uh, so, uh, passing it, uh, supports our clerical association, they brought this to, uh, my team as, um, as a request, uh, based on, and, uh, something that happens, uh, over the course of, um, some years. If a unit member, anyone in our clerical unit, um, goes out for, um, extended absence or covering another area of the district, um, someone has to pick up the load. So typically we would look for, um, a substitute or a replacement during that short time period, but, um, in times of the year, we can't always do that. So this allows an existing unit member to step into that, um, existing role, um, and compensate some as such.
I mean, the reason behind the resolution itself, like, what did we used to do without it before? And what are the inconveniences?
Uh, so someone would step in and not get compensated, now they would.
Thank you.
So basically they're doing their job and someone else's.
Um, we're really looking at out of, uh, so exam- for example, uh, We're really looking at out of, so example, for example, the clerical for one of our assistant principals stepping into the registrar's position temporarily, or our attendance clerk, something where, to Larry's point is a really good point, where you really can't do your job and what you're stepping into. For example, registration in August, you're not able to do anything else, attendance on any day at the high school, you can't do your job and something else, so that's a really good point as well. So, covering kind of out of what you would typically do.
I mean, Larry took my question, I mean, a little bit further, I mean, I have another question, like, follow-up. You can't do two, you can't be in two places at the same time. I used to say that when I used to teach, kind of like, two meetings at the same time at a pass, we have to pick one. So, what do you do then? I mean, even you compensate, my point is, like, you, you, you're offering extra compensation, but the person can't split into places.
Right, so, for, for an example, if there's a two-week absence, we may look for two unit members want to take one week each, because we don't want the work to pile up and what they were supposed to be doing for too long. So, we work with our administrators to see what can be taken off the plate and what can be paused temporarily, because like you said, you can't be two places at once, but our administrators are really good at prioritizing that attendance is gonna be a top priority over something else that might be on someone's plate.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. That brings us to item twelve, that is the District Office Asbestos Bid Award. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby award the bid for the District Administration Building Asbestos Abatement Project to the NCS Abatement Services as the qualified low bidder for the base bid of thirty-nine thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Second? Discussion?
Yeah, again, I raised this one, more, I mean, again, more visibility, more clarity, what exactly are we talking about? I mean, is it to come up with this number of thirty-nine thousand, the project is well-defined, or is it investigative? We're gonna walk around, see where we need it, where we don't?
This project was one of the small projects that were included in last year's budget, not the one we just worked on. And what it, what it encompasses is, the district office had both, both an issue with the roof, and we also have, forever and a day, we have certain asbestos wrapped around piping and ductwork down in the basement that's starting to deteriorate, and it has to be remediated. It always comes up on our building condition survey, anytime we have an engineer just happen to be walking through there, you know, they give us those, that look like, you gotta take care of this. So, that's why we addressed it last year. In terms of the roof and the abatement in the basement, both of those are gonna be taken care of no later than the end of this summer, and the prices came in, they came in right under budget, which is great, and this was a good price as well.
Thanks, Harvey. So, we're talking about just one building, the district building?
Just, it's just one building, just the district office in the basement.
Okay, so the scope of the project is very well-defined, that's a-
Very well-defined, yes.
This will take care of it.
Oh, yes, this is all, this is a project that's been scrubbed and approved by the State Education Department, and that's, that's why we're finally able to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. That brings us to item thirteen. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept the re-adoption of BOE policies, take the rest per document. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
So, I think we have nineteen policies here, I'd like to go through them one by one, just kidding. I do, the first one here, nineteen hundred, just to, I've got just a few minor points and a couple policies. Nineteen hundred here, parent and family engagement, and under the section, the bold headline here, building capacity for parent and family engagement. Number one and number two, it both says, to achieve this objective, the District and its Title I skills will host parent assessment nights, family math nights, open house orientations for kindergarten, new student, middle school, and high school transition nights, parent teacher conferences, AAS, open house, PTO meetings, coffee with principal, PPS parent seminars, and Cornwall Cares workshops. And number two has the same items. I'm not sure that we're doing all of those. I don't think we're doing Cornwall Cares workshops, I could be wrong. Coffee with principal, I don't know that that's in there. So, I, I think this is an easy fix, you could put, you know, we'll host events similar to, but not limited to.
Which may include?
Right, which may include, I, you know, I don't think it's a problem with the procedure, it's, I'll, I'll tell a brief story, so we're not here until ten o'clock at night. Worked in a food facility, and we had procedures, and one of the audits, one of the procedures said if you got a cut, you would use a blue Band-Aid. So, the blue Band-Aid, if it got into the food product, you would see it, that it's blue. So, of course, the auditor says, "Well, let's go to the first aid kit and check the Band-Aids." And whoever had the great idea to put the blue Band-Aids didn't reorder blue Band-Aids after the blue Band-Aids went out, and they're regular Band-Aids, and you got dinged on the audit, said you could've just put, you'll wear a Band-Aid if you get a cut, but you put blue, so you have to then have blue. So, I think that language there is just a little bit of a blue Band-Aid as opposed to a Band-Aid, and I think it can be cleaned up very easily, but I just, while we're reviewing it, we might as well get it right.
That was a great story, Jim. And I mean that sincerely. I think that's fine. We can, we can pass with that modified language, as long as it's noted. Linda's got it, so we're good, yeah?
Just the word "may" or "such as"?
Which may include, yeah. Jim, was, you, you mentioned other policies. Okay.
Yeah, the other two I have are in fourteen.
In fourteen, okay. And just as a reminder, too, the, this is, these are under readoption because they had such minor edits, similar to frankly what Jim just suggested. So, all of them are basically the same as what was revised and readopted back in twenty-nineteen. So, with that "may include" language amended on nineteen hundred, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. All right, that brings us to item fourteen. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept the first reading of policies, take the rest per document. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, so I have two minor points here. The first one's on policy eighty-one thirty, the school safety plans and teams, and under the building level emergency response plans and teams section that's bolded, we're replacing shall be with is in, in two or three instances there. And shall is crossed out, but be isn't crossed out, and perhaps that's just an edit in the document. This is a complaint that only my lawyer wife would appreciate, but just, you can't have is be, just is responsible, and you need to remove shall and be, not just shall.
It's two verbs.
Yeah. So, I'm sure that's a change that we can make, that's a, yeah.
Aye.
And then the other one, on twenty-three forty, notice of meetings, and it says that when a meeting is scheduled less than a week in advance, the board will provide or electronically, electronically transmit public notice to the extent practicable. Said notice will be conspicuously posted in one or more designated public locations, including the district's website. I know we always put them on the website, so that meets the qualification of one. Just, this is really more of a question, do we, do we post even for not, even for meetings that are not scheduled on short notice, you know, we have the meeting scheduled, are those posted other places than the website?
District office, so, we have a bulletin board, right as you come in, we put all of our meetings posted there.
Okay. Perhaps for short notice meetings, or perhaps for all meetings, we should think about using school messenger or other means of communication and just emailing it out so people don't have to. I mean, I, I hope that people aren't checking the district calendar every day, is the first thing in the morning, I hope that they have better things to do every day with that, so, just, you know, it's a public meeting, we wanna get the word out, it's not gonna change the policy at all, that's more of a broader suggestion that we just may wanna consider other ways to disseminate that information.
It's almost always on the Facebook page, I can't guarantee that, but, almost always, but I hear what you're saying, it's a, a good reminder of what our policy requires.
Only old people like us use Facebook, Brendan.
That's true, no, you're right. Okay, so, we can, those are really kind of edit notes for next time, since this is the first reading, so those will be incorporated into the second reading, which will be the next policy committee meeting, and then brought back to the board, so, we're not, we're voting now not to adopt these policies, but just to accept the first reading.
Yeah, and the notice of meetings, I'm not even recommending a change in the policy, that was more of a general, that was more of a tangent.
Correct.
And I'm sure that Terry will take my grammar suggestion, and the other one without complaint.
You know, Jim, those are usually the suggestions I provide, and the main, and frankly, it's the only reason I'm on the policy committee, so I think that, I feel like I've, I've been made redundant. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, that brings us to our second recognition of visitors, anybody wishing to speak and step forward to the microphone, limit your comment, identify yourself, limit your comments to three minutes, and again, you can leave your contact information on the sign-in sheet next to Linda. Okay, well, that will bring us to our closing comments from the board, so I'll start with you, John.
Hey, thanks, Brendan. So, first and foremost, congrats to our high school awardees. It's always great to honor success, and we have a lot of success in Cornwall, so hats off to all of them, and all the seniors, actually, who are gonna be getting ready to be moving on, so, like, we recognize CJ tonight going to Clemson, I think that's just fantastic, right? Cornwall's starting to spend, send a lot of kids to the SEC, I've noticed lately, and that's, that's, that's a great sign, 'cause they're getting lots of money from, from the SEC to, to attend college down there, so that's, that's just tremendous. Also wanna to send my congrats to the newly-elected school board members, Christine, Christian, Carl, the three Cs, can't call them amigos because Christine is, Christine. And anyhow, I, I think that's, that's great, I, I do wanna say thank you to all that ran. I know it was a crowded field, I, I look upon this service on the board as a give-back to the community, and I am grateful to see that, that we had four new members of the community be willing to step up and take to the, to the mantle. Larry, I, I thank you for your service, for, for all that you've done for this school district, and will continue to do, by the way, I know you're not going far, so, so that's great. And to Teresa as well, for her running, I'm, I'm sorry it didn't work out the way people had hoped, but I'm encouraged that we have new blood coming to the board, and that's, I think, always a, a good thing, because we're getting more and more diverse, and I think from a variety of, of perspectives, most importantly, from a skill set, which I'm really encouraged by. So, so thank you for everybody, thank you to the community for, for supporting the budget, I'm not sure who said it, maybe it was Brendan, who said the, the overwhelming support, I think it was about seventy-five percent, that's two years in a row where we've had such high numbers, which defeats the, 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 the old Cornwall, so I guess we're becoming a new Cornwall, which is, which is very encouraging, and I think foreshadowing for greatness coming into the future. I, I, I wanna take a step back and, and just quickly talk about the infill issue, I'm glad we brought it up, I'm glad we put it to bed, I, I, I hope it doesn't rear its ugly head. I just wanna say one thing about safety, there's different types of safety when it comes to, to playing on turf, there's lots of studies out there with contradictory information, whether it be the heat of the fields, whether it be the G-Shock of the field, whether it be the toxics, toxicity of the volatile organic compounds out there. Life is about risk management, I think we heard Rick talk about where some of these materials are found in everyday living. I think we have done a pretty good job of vetting, from a safety perspective, on that which we know about, there's always unknowns, and I think that as those unknowns either become known, or continue to be unknown, I think we just always need to be mindful that the kid's safety is first and foremost, and I made a comment during the facilities committee, that if I thought the danger to the kids was one in ten thousand, I couldn't support this, because one kid's life was not worth putting it in for, for all the rest. But I don't believe, currently, the data suggests that the risk is that low, it's somewhere between one to fifty and one to a hundred thousand, when I say fifty, fifty thousand. So, so I think those are tolerable risks, I know we really don't wanna spend a lot of time talking about risk in such a calculated and, and detailed manner, but from a guy who's spent a lot of time in risk, I, I size up the numbers, and I, and I think it's worth pursuing, and I just wanted to be on the record for saying that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Bass?
Thanks, Brendan. Let's start by, again, thanking the Assistant Superintendent for instructions on the excellent communication prior to the vote on the budget and the elections, I mean, almost daily reminders and fairly nicely-packed message you read it, and you like reading it, basically, and I think it did show good results. At the end, number two, again, the, the communication from our five principals I just happened to have this year, my kids, three kids, in three different schools, and I get the rest as a board member as well, the communication, the, the reminders about small, tiny, little activities, like, whether they're raising funds for a certain thing, and the yearbook, I mean, you name it, I mean, tons and tons, I get like, ten emails every day, and I appreciate seeing them and reading them, communication is very important, of course, with the community, because we're busy parents, and as Jim said, like, nobody wakes up in the morning and looks at the calendar, I mean, see what's in today, but I really appreciate that, and the excellent job from all five principals. Number three, I'd like to congratulate, congratulate the new, newly-elected Board of Education members, and thank you for kind of, I mean, running, and, but, at the same time, I thank those who ran and weren't, I mean, among the winners this year, I tell everybody, there's always a second time, I mean, you can always run again, but the point is, six people ran this year, which means they had to give everything to come and serve, let's say, volunteer job, everybody knows that, so you have to put it on top of everything else you're doing, you're, you're doing. Definitely, you're gonna have some winners and some people who are not maybe that lucky, but again, thank you for all six community members, I'd say, who ran this year. Maybe I should close by talking again about the infill and the synthetic turf. Some of the concerns that, that I hear from the community are about the water wells and the neighboring, the surrounding area, and that's why I asked my question today about, like, exactly how you drain the water. I would just say that, again, maybe kind of go back to my first point I made about communication, communication is very important, like, if we hear, get from concerns, hear about concerns from the community, whether it be a ladder, phone call, maybe, I don't know, request an appointment with some- an appointment with some of the, the administration, I mean, people responsible in the district. I would say we need to be very transparent, I would say, and maybe take, walk the extra mile even in doing that. Like, if we receive a question, let's provide them with engineering kind of drawing, as I said, like a cut, you know, like a section drawing, layer by layer, how does it look like? The drainage that, again, Larry expanded on, how the water is channeled and going, going back to the jellyfish, I think I heard, the filtration. So let's make sure we do address the community members' concern, and as I said, like, maybe walk an extra mile, provide them with everything we can, lab results, engineering drawing, and everything that would let them feel a little bit better about it.
Thank you, Bass. Margaret.
I get to talk even though I was this late?
No, you had a written excuse.
Thanks. I have a note. I left it in the car. My dog ate it. That's right, exactly. I wanted to just quickly say Dragon Day, unbelievable. I've heard about it from so many people. The fact that we have that kind of stuff in the school, I mean, just like we had the students come and talk to the board and say, we want, you know, B.C. calculus, that they're advocating for themselves, is what you hope every high school student will be able to do by the time they leave our district. The fact that we had the student leaders who produced the entire Dragon Day, I know, I just found out today, that they actually reached out to the rec department in the town, who does events like this all the time. They reached out to them, they asked for framework, suggestions, all that kind of thing. So not only did they sit around a table and go, let's come up with this, they had the forethought and the wherewithal to go talk to other people who do this for a living, which, again, getting out there, talking to people you might not know, is a huge thing for, for any student to do. And so, huge kudos to the entire leadership team, big turnout, and now we have a dragon with a name. So, you know. I wanted to also talk about how excited I am. This is always one of my favorite parts of the year, just because of all the culmination of all the great things that we get to see. Upcoming concerts that are still happening, end of year events, specifically on my, my list of things to do is the AP Art Gallery tour, which is, or the show that's happening at the high school. Amazing to see what kind of skills these high school kids have. On the music front, there's the string showcase and a jazz, like, all these great things that, for not only the kids to kind of work together and play with other age groups, which is always a fantastic thing, but to get the chance to kind of showcase their talents and let other people see, and even the younger kids who get to see them doing it, to go, you know, great things. The annual Boston trip, I know there are a lot of eighth graders that are very excited about that. And then, the fact that, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just blown away by, by Carrie Beloga, who once again, if you don't know, she broke a national record in the 2K steeple last weekend. So amazing, just amazing that this girl will just, you know, they have to do a commercial about her or something, just running like the Energizer Bunny or something, I don't know. And lastly, I, I wanted to, to let everybody know, because I think this is also a fantastic program, that, that shows that we're not only about Cornwall, but we're about bringing, you know, allowing kids to see other elements, and that is our annual program, where we have the Swiss student teachers. We have, every year, from St. Gallen, Switzerland, there's a, a teaching university there, and every year for umpteen years, I mean, I've been hosting since 2016, we have Swiss student interns who come from Switzerland. That's why they're Swiss, they come from Switzerland. And they stay for three weeks, they work with our teachers, they learn about the American education system, they get to teach the students about Switzerland and the Swiss, you know, student teaching programs, and how, how it differs in different countries. It's a wonderful program. We give them, we, we place them with host families, so they get to see not only what school is like, but what American culture is like. The three that we have this year are absolutely unbelievable. They're doing fifth grade, third grade, and second grade, and they're just so excited and so enthusiastic to be here, to learn about this, and to bring what they, they can. They brought chocolates and cheeses and all these great things for the kids, which, of course, we all know, works with the kids right away. But it's just something that I, I really want to commend the school district for doing this year and year again, because you could say, no, sorry, we're busy, you know, we've got too many things going on. But the extra effort is made, and I always think that that's a great thing, and there's, Megan is a huge part of that. She's the one that, you know, rounds up the, the teachers and, and gets the interest, and it's just a phenomenal program, and I hope it goes on forever and ever, and I'm always here to help host. So, that's it.
Thanks, Margaret. Jim?
Thank you, Brendan. So I'll just start by saying thank you to our community for supporting the budget. A lot of work went in, obviously, at the board level and before the board level, from the administrators on down through all the different units of the building. So as John said, you know, 70, I wrote down 73% support, we'll round up to 75. And at, to your point, it was two years in a row. And we, we previously had several years where it was, it was a question. It was a low number. It was a flip of a coin. So to see that, I appreciate the community's support to do that. You know, I think we, as a board, need to earn that support, and we're going to continue that work to, to keep doing that. Thank you to everybody who ran, echoing some of the previous comments. You know, we all sitting up at this table know the effort, the energy that takes, not only personally, but with your family, to do that. So thank you to everybody that did that. And thank you to Margaret for serving. So no chocolate tonight? Thank you for serving.
Oh, you mean on the board?
On the board.
I'm with you.
Yes. You didn't run, but you're on the board, and...
Right.
Yes. Yes. So, you know, we're going to have three new faces next year, but, you know, thank you, Margaret, thank you, Larry, thank you, Teresa, who's not here, and we've got next meeting to, to talk more about you guys. But congratulations to Ms. Diaz, Mr. Brunelli, and Mr. Gilpatrick, and I think we all look forward to working with them next year. What else did I have in my notes? Teacher Appreciation Week was last week, or the week before? They're all starting to blend together. We found, as I look in the audience, that our teachers are smart, because all of them have left, except for you, Miss Asupi, sorry. But, you know, thank, just, you know, thank you, it was really good to see, you know, my kids at CUH, they had a lot of events to, to have the teachers, and obviously, you know, they're a big lifeblood of our school, so thank you to all the teachers. And I put too many events to list. Luckily, I went after Margaret, because she lists most of them every time, so I don't have to rehash. But really, for me, you know, we're all here for the students, we're all here for the kids, and tonight, we, we gave a great taste of that. We always love to see Colton, Peter wasn't here tonight, but we love to see Colton and Peter. As you said, it really energizes us. The Dragon Day, really outstanding to see the Student Leadership Council, great idea, really great how that's taking off. And then the recognition, what really struck me tonight is we recognized six students, but it was across all the different areas that we do. So we had two athletes, but they weren't honored tonight for being athletes, even though they were honored for being state champions and national champions, in Carrie's case. But they were honored tonight for being student athletes, which is really nice to see, really important. And then we had two people honored for the arts, one for music and, and vocal performance, and one for painting and digital arts. And then we had, you know, auto repair and carpentry, two of our Bosie students honored. So to, to see six students across those three different areas, and it's just always great to see, and get that reminder of, we do a lot of things well in this district, and it's great to see that recognition.
Thanks, Jim. Richard.
You threw me off, you didn't go in order here.
Switching things up, Richard.
All right. So first off, I'm going to start my comments here, the same way I always do, thanking Colton, Peter, who's not here tonight, for their updates. It's been mentioned, I think, by just about everyone here tonight, that we really appreciate everything they bring to the table, everything they report back to us. You know, that's why we all serve. We're here for the students, and we're here to make sure that their experience in Cornwall is the best it can be. And I know for all of our students, especially the class of 23, it's a very exciting time. It's about a month away from graduation, and as a, I don't know how much longer I can say, recent graduate, but this will be three years removed. I graduated in 2020. The only advice I can give them is, don't fall victim to senioritis. Finish line is in sight, but keep pushing hard, keep working till the very end, and we're all proud of you, not just to our class of 23, but to all our students, K through 12, and I'll even say UPK, our UPK kids. So, thank you again to Colton and Peter. Dragon Day, what a phenomenal event. This event showed that our students here in Cornwall are real leaders, and I think that's what we need to strive towards creating, very good leaders. And I think we're all proud of, of what this event turned into, and I hope to see this as an annual event moving forward. And I also want to congratulate all our high school outstanding students that were recognized tonight, just another example of our amazing students, and, yeah, that's, everybody else said it, so I'll just echo what they said. I think, Jim, you mentioned it, Teacher Appreciation Week was a week or two ago, May 8th through 12th, I think. So I just want to thank all of our teachers and our staff, we appreciate you. I think having only one week of teacher appreciation is, I don't know how to put it, but I think 52 weeks in the year, we should be appreciating our, our teachers, staff, administrators, everyone involved in our education system, and, and helping our students, and, and making them the best people they can be. So I just want to thank everyone in our school district for your hard work and your efforts. I want to end on a, a, a good note. I want to thank our community for coming out and supporting the budget. I was confident that we put forward a fiscally responsible budget that did a lot of good for our students, and put our district in a good place moving forward. Now, did I want more? Did I want to do more? Yes, and I think we could all say that. But we have to, you know, have balance. So I just want to thank everyone who came out and voted and supported our school district. And I want to congratulate Christine Diaz, Christian Brunelli, and Carl Gilpatrick for your election to the board. We look forward to working with you. And I want to thank Larry Berger. Your service to the board has been recognized, you know, very impressive. I think as a new board member, you know, I've, I've looked up to you for a few years now, for, for many years, actually. Teresa, I think she's made it very clear that she's in it for the students. She's passionate about education, because she just, didn't just serve here for three years, she was on the Monroe Woodbury Board for, I want to say, 18 years? 18 years, okay, good. So it's very clear that she's, you know, so passionate, just like the rest of us are. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you to people that got up and spoke at the public comments, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Larry?
Once upon a time, we had a board member that would say ditto.
God bless him.
It was, you know, by the time it gets to the, next to the last person down here, you know, it, it, um, thank you for your kind words. Went to the High School Spring Concert, that, that's so uplifting. It's such a neat, just to hear them, and the excitement that, that they have, it's so cool. The First Annual Dragon Day, oh, that was phenomenal. I was wandering around the field, which incidentally looks great at the moment, I just want to let, just say that. The kids were having a good time, I was watching a tug of war, and one side decided they were going to just let go. And they did, and the other side went flying. You know, it was, it was just fun to watch. Everybody was laughing, and it was just having a good time. I'd like to thank our student reps. I would say, I, I would like them to be around for this part of the meeting, because in the past, we've had our student reps give their input, and I think that would be a, a nice thing to have. Sometimes we, we would hear things that we wouldn't normally hear during their presentations. Because I also wanted to tell Colton, I've got a, one of my granddaughters is going to, to Clemson next year, and have I got a girl for him? I want to thank the community for, and if you're, if you're watching, I'm sorry. I know she's not watching, so it's, uh, thank the community for the support of the budget. And next year, I think, is going to be a nice, an interesting transition year, and, and it'll be, you guys haven't gotten rid of me yet, as your Bosie's rep, I will be sitting out in the audience, not every night, but I will be out there. And I, I think that's, I wrote, I wrote a note here, and I can't read my own handwriting, so I'll just have to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
What did I write here?
Louis, but if Larry recalls what he wanted to say, he'll have to cede your time, but for now. All right, Louis, the floor is officially yours.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you to the community for supporting the 23-24 budget. You know, it's, it's a lot of work that we all do up here, of the time, energy that Harvey puts into it, and his, and, and, you know, his team there, meeting with the district heads, the, the, the building leaders, how that matriculates up to us. So it's a lot of work, I appreciate it, and I thank the community, again, for, for supporting it. It's one of the largest margins I recall seeing i- in, in recent years. So, yeah, I appreciate that. You know, to echo Jim's point, I think it's a, it's a sway that's occurring, and I think it's all heading in the right direction. So, you know, thank you for that. Congratulations to our incoming board members. Careful what you wish for, it's, it's, it's work, it's good, you'll do great. Also, congratulations to our outstanding students. And then I'll go a step beyond that and say congratulations to our outstanding students that are recognized here tonight, because all of our, all of our students are outstanding. Well, while, whereas the, the folks here tonight did excel in their, in their prospective fields, we, we have great students in this district. So congratulations to everybody. And then lastly, CJ and Peter, unfortunately, Peter has a series of mishaps that he just, just couldn't quite get here, which is okay. I appreciate that, that intention. And then CJ, thank you, posthumously, you're not here, but congratulations, or, you know, thank you for your reports, and congratulations on the Clemson Tiger, you do great, appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Louis. So just really echo what everybody said, Carrie, Tyler, Maddie, James, Sean, Austin. It's funny with recognition, you know, you want to obviously be specific enough that you are recognizing individuals, but what we really mean, it, they've kind of become symbols for all of the great things that are happening in this district, and I think having people from so many different corners and types of achievement bears that out, but certainly, we have graduation to look forward to, where we get to celebrate literally every single one of our graduating seniors, and give them the ovation they deserve. And I think that's something that I am personally looking forward to this year. Anything that brings us closer to the results of the work that happens here is, is always great. Speaking of which, that budget, I already mentioned it before, I got a text from somebody the morning after, who had just received a text that they were placed in one of the UPK schools, they had been on the waiting list. And that was, I mean, talk about oxygen, right? So things like that, I think we always need to remind ourselves of, that the work here, the work matters. To the point about the budget passing so overwhelmingly, I thank the community before we've all thanked them, and certainly, it starts with the community. But I also want to thank everyone who made that possible. You know, the community is, is not just supporting a budget, they are saying that we approve of what's going on in this school district. And that starts at the And that starts at the building level, that starts with every teacher in every classroom, that starts with every administrator, that starts with every custodial worker, it goes all the way up to the administrators we have here on this dais. The community likes what it's seeing and it wants more of it. And it is a joy to work with so many of you so closely. I don't know better professionals in my professional life than the people I work with here and I think the community is recognizing that and that is great to see. As far as Dragon Day, I missed it because I was coaching softball, but I did hear it because the sound speakers were just that, or they carried that far. It's an extraordinary day. Kudos to everybody who put it together. The fact that it's student-led is just tremendous. I mean, talk, this is everything that we should be encouraging as a school district, so just extraordinary to see. And final bit, just about the virgin rubber, again, just really appreciate all the work that went into that at the facilities committee. I like being surprised, I like changing my view. I remember at this point last year, I was thinking, oh, cork is going to be the way to go. And seeing all the work that went into it, seeing all of the research and what I found to be persuasive arguments about the safety of the virgin rubber, I thought was great to see. So I thank everybody who put in all the hours on that throughout the course of the year. We have one more meeting to go, that, before the end of this term, that will be at the high school, so we bid adieu to Lee Road for this term. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, we will see you next time. A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Removal.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
Motion carried.